Calling me to get the order, thank you all for being here. And we're going to go over the Bond Commission's final recommendation. And I'm going to let Mr. Berry take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just simply going to call on Freeze Nichols. Mr. Charles Archer will begin the presentation and then he'll go through and he's going to hand it off to a couple of our esteemed members of the Bond Commission to wrap that up, I believe.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and good evening. As Manager said, I'm Charles Archer with Freeze and Nichols, and it's our pleasure to be here again with you all this evening. As you know, we've been working with your staff and with the Bond Commission and you all since last May to develop the list of projects to, for you to consider to include in this first phase, the spending investment of the first $35 million of the bond referendum that your citizens passed last year. Let me just start off by saying it's been just a true pleasure to work with your staff and with the Bond Commission. Everyone is so passionate about the opportunities that this holds for the city and improving the quality of life and investment for the future. It's just been, you know, we were a little bit, didn't know, quite know how working with the 42-member Citizens Committee would be like. It's been great. They are really so passionate, work together, and made the process much better. It's probably been the most transparent, most engaged process we've ever been involved in this type of bond program. So it's been our pleasure to work with everyone on this up to this point. As was just introduced, I'm going to give an overview of what we're, tonight's presentation and how we got to where we are. And then I'm going to hand it off to two members of the Bond Commission, Mike Thomas and Frank Young. But this is what we hope to cover in the next 15 to 20 minutes or so, is just kind of recap of what got us from last spring to this evening. If you recall, last month, you all had a workshop and you looked at six different options for investing in the bond program. I'm going to review those options for you again, show you the results again of all the voting dots that you used, along with the Bond Commission, all your preferences there. We also did a survey of the Bond Commission about the Riverwalk options in December, and then last week presented two final options to the Bond Commission for their consideration. And they have their recommendation for you this evening, and Mike and Frank will share more about that in just a few minutes. So that's what we hope to cover in the next 15 minutes or so. So let's go back to last spring when we were engaged by the city to be your program manager. Citizens had overwhelmingly passed your bond referendum in November before last, and you had the Inspiring Spaces document that painted the vision for investment in the future of the City of Hickory. And this was a vision of investment for the future. We also use this document for the Tiger Grant application that was submitted last spring to USDOT, but it's a high-level planning document. So we went, we were given, this map's a little bit hard to see, but where we started at last spring was, we were given nine streetscape projects, five gateway projects, the Riverwalk and the Citywalk projects, for a total of 16 projects to work with the Bond Commission on determining priority, what the scope for those projects might be, what the cost for those projects might be. And so that's where we began work with that long list of projects back in the spring. The very first thing we did was the pre-engineering work, the technical work, looking at all 16 projects, developing GIS files for each of those to incorporate topography utilities. Our staff conducted field visits. If you remember that really hot week in June last summer, that was the week most of those were done. Also, the Bond Commission subcommittees visited all the projects in the field, doing van tours, looking at the sites as well. We also coordinated with your staff about projects that are either underway by the private sector or projects that were maybe maintenance or capital projects that the city's doing to coordinate that, make sure we don't waste money in these efforts. And the bottom line was to look at what impact these 16 projects might have on the community, the constraints there might be to get those designed and built within your budget, and to look at the feasibility of each. Part of that included coordinating with what we call the regulators, those agencies or entities that are going to have to be involved in issuing permits for these projects. That included Duke Energy will be involved with the Riverwalk project, as well as the streetscapes and the gateways, all of those because of being the electric utility here. NC Deaner, as it was known at the time, today it's the Department of Environmental Quality, that's the state environmental agency will be involved. Obviously Norfolk Southern Railroad is going to play a key role in the Citywalk project as that gets defined and constructed. USDOT is involved in all of these projects as well. And last but not least is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission because of the Duke Energy License for Lake Hickory will be involved in permitting the Riverwalk project. So we spent a lot of time developing the pre-engineering that led us into the concepts. You've seen a number of the byproducts of this work in the handouts, maps, drawings, renderings, et cetera, and this is just an example of some of those. This is another map that probably better shows the 16 projects. The red linear ones are the streetscapes. There are a total of nine of those. There are five gateways, which are the blue circles that we looked at, then Citywalk from Fourth Street to Lenora Ryan University, and then Riverwalk from US 321 to Rotary Guyton Park. We developed the concepts for those, we developed budgets for those. When we finished doing that, we came up with about $75 million worth of needs and wants within all of these projects. So the next rule was, well, you can't, it's hard to stretch $35 million into $75 million, so you have to set some priorities. So we spent the last three or four months working with you and working with the Bond Commission and staff to develop those priorities. This is just another example of one of the byproducts of the streetscape summary that we provided to you last month. The other half of this effort is beyond the technical work has been the coordination and collaboration. As you see up there, we've had over 66 meetings since last May. Most of those with the Bond Commission and the subcommittees and chairs and vice chairs of all those committees, you can see that we've had 23 meetings. Those folks have really worked hard on behalf of this community to make this process better, make the end result better. We had three city council workshops, several meetings with city staff and just regulatory meetings and just 25-plus other meetings to get to developing those scopes and those budgets. And it's been an iterative process, as you'll see from that graph in the bottom right-hand corner. We develop a concept, get feedback, it get amended, continue to get that feedback till we got it worked out, to where it needed to be at this high planning level that we are at this phase before we go into designing the projects. As you recall, at your meeting in December, we presented to you six different options for how the $35 million of your bond proceeds could be invested in these projects. Those that are labeled Option A, Option B, and Option C are concepts that we at Freeze and Nichols developed and presented to the Bond Commission at their December meeting. During that meeting, we broke the Bond Commission members up into four groups, and we gave them the option of endorsing one of our three options or to craft their own. And three groups chose to craft their own, and that's, they're shown as Group One, Group Two, and Group Four. Group Three actually went through the process of crafting their own, and when it came time to put it up on the wall, they decided to endorse Option A. So we had those six versions that we presented to you all at your works session last month. Option A, just to recap what they were, includes Riverwalk Two, which is the eight-and-a-half million dollar project, and it includes what we call the connection of streetscapes from I-40 at Lenora Ryan all the way to Citywalk, from Citywalk down Old Lenora Road to Riverwalk. So it's connectivity for all the streetscapes. Group One and Group Two were almost identical. There were just minor differences. When we took them back to the office and began to look at the differences there, they were just really minor. Option B that we had developed where we spread the projects across the city, there was not connectivity with the streetscapes across the city. They were spread to different sectors across the city. And that didn't get a whole lot, and you'll see just in a moment, a whole lot of support through the process that we took you all and the Bond Commission through. Option C was an option that we prepared that funds Riverwalk Option One, which is the $12.6 million version, which is all along the waterfront, and it did provide for the connection of the streetscapes from US 40 in Lenora Ryan all the way through downtown to Riverwalk. And then the Group Four was one that was actually similar to Option C, but it's not fully connected. It didn't have that northern connection from Old Lenora Road to Riverwalk in it. And you'll see the outcome here on the next slide of how the voting dots were placed at the December meetings. Let's start with the Bond Commission here on the left. You can see they had the groups. When we looked at the analysis here, Option A, Group One and Group Two, those versions were essentially the same with minor differences. They just turned blue. When you add those up, 67% of the Bond Commission at that meeting in December favored a version of Option A, which is the one with Riverwalk Phase Option Two, and the connectivity of the streetscapes from I-40 at Lenora Ryan all the way to Riverwalk. Another option that got a lot of traction at the Bond Commission meeting was the Group Four option. That received 30% of the vote from the Bond Commission, and that was the one that funded Riverwalk Option Phase One, the $12.6 million version of Riverwalk, and didn't quite provide all the connectivity. Again, didn't provide the connection from Old Lenora Road north to the Riverwalk project. Then we presented those same options to you all in your work session in December, and you can see how the votes were cast by you all. You were there, the dots were placed that evening. And again, about 67% of the city council, as compared to 67% of the Bond Commission, favored Option A, Group One, which again is very, very similar. And 33% of you preferred Group Four, which funded Riverwalk One, but not all the connectivity. So it's just purely coincidental, but it shows how close to you are, all on the same page between the Bond Commission, the city council, and the work that you've done over the last several months. And last but not least, in this bottom right-hand corner, at the Bond Commission meeting in December, we had citizens in attendance, and we gave them cards and gave them opportunity to write down what they preferred and their thoughts. And only two citizens chose to submit cards that evening, but those two preferred Option A as well and thought you needed to see that data in this presentation this evening. As I said, you were all very close. The Bond Commission's very close, council's very close in placing your dots, but there seems to be a lot of consensus on how the investment should be made. But one of the points that we're trying to figure out is if Riverwalk Option One versus Option Two. And that's why we did a survey with the Bond Commission again in December to get a little bit more data, so we can get a little bit closer to this evening's recommendation. So just to recap for you, Option One is the one on the left-hand side. That's the $12.6 million project that's all along the waterfront from 321 to Rotary Guyton Park. Option Two is on the right. That's the $8.5 million option that's about 50% along the water from 321 to about midway, and then it goes upland to get out of the riparian buffer at least 50 feet from the high water of Lake Hickory, and then ties back into the Rotary Guyton Park. So that's the differences between Option One and Option Two, just to re-familiarize you with those differences. So the survey that we asked of the Bond Commission in December, we asked them three questions. Which option of Riverwalk do you prefer, One or Two? Why'd you pick it? And then why didn't you pick the other one? That's essentially the questions we asked. And you can see the results up here, 59%, which is the blue area, preferred Option Two, which is the $8.5 million project, and 41% Option One, which is the $12.6 million project. We were able to get comments from the Bond Commission, and also Mythbusters, I'm going to go over some of that, some of the things that may not be completely accurate that we heard at the Bond Commission meeting, and maybe even at your meeting in December, about the Riverwalk. Let's just talk a little bit about the comments that we got back from the Bond Commission respondents in this survey. We took and categorized them into the categories you see in this pie chart, and I'm going to start with this green slice of the pie right here, which represents 25%, and that's diversity. The comments were about really preferring Option Two because it offered a diverse experience. Part of it's along the water, part of it's up in the trees, was the gist of those comments. The next slice of the pie is a 16% here, this light brownish color. Those comments were about diversity and cost, the diversity of the experience, and it's cheaper. That's why they preferred Option Two. Then this blue slice, which is 20%, the comments were all about cost. They felt like it was more cost-effective, those that chose Option Two over Option One because it's essentially $4 million cheaper. And then finally, 25, well, not finally, but 25% of the comments were about iconic in support of Riverwalk Option One, the $12.6 million version. It makes a bigger statement, it's more iconic because it's essentially along the waterfront all the way from 321 to Rotary Guyton Park. The yellow slice of the pie was a combination of all those comments, it was kind of hard to segregate or assign it to one category or another. And then there are miscellaneous several other comments that showed up. But that seemed to be the four big categories where the Bond Commission stated why they chose the option that they chose, and why they didn't choose the option they didn't choose. So some of the myths that we wanted to clear up, we did this with the Bond Commission last week at their meeting and thought it'd be appropriate to do it with you all this evening as well. Someone made a comment that there wouldn't be any shade on Option One of Riverwalk. The fact is, it's going to be in the shade most of the day. Late afternoon, when the sun's going down sometime, it will get some sunshine, but for the most part, it's going to be in the shade, the way it's oriented along the northwest face of Lake Hickory there. The other myth was that Option One, which again is all along the waterfront, would be harder to permit than Option Two, and that's not accurate either. Both Option One and Option Two have infrastructure along the water. The permitting process is going to be the same, same timeframe essentially for both. So it really won't affect the timing or the cost. The permitting process will be the same for Option One versus Option Two. The other comment we heard was that Option One, because it's along the water, could flood or catch runoff. The first comment here is that both Option One and Option Two should be designed and will be designed to handle whatever stormwater they need to handle in any typical storm to meet the city's design standards there. But keep in mind, as you know, Lake Hickory is a dam-controlled impoundment. Most of the time, it rarely floods, but it can't say it never floods. There are going to be times when there are severe storm events and water's going to increase there. But Option One and Option Two would be affected equally because, remember, Option One is 100% along the waterfront, Option Two's half along the waterfront. So both would be affected. Both would be, still be built above the high watermark as required by Duke Energy and by FERC. So that's going to be a minimal impact and shouldn't really be an issue of making a decision about Option One. Option Two, a comment we heard was it has more varied grades or slopes, and that's true. If you can envision Option Two, it's essentially, it's a lot of the water starting at 321 going towards Rotary Guyton Park about halfway. And then it's going to transition up the hill, and as it transitions up the hill, it will, obviously going to be different grades going up the hill to get to wherever it's going to be constructed through the trees. Both Option One and Option Two can be designed and built to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act, which will not allow more than a 5% grade on the slope of the walk itself. So it's true, it's going to have varied slopes, but it's just because it's a little different design. The other is Option Two has more varied elevations, and that's true. Option One is essentially basically a flat trail built along the water's edge from 321 to Rotary Guyton Park. Option Two, again, is going to transition up the hill through the trees. So yeah, it's going to be higher above the lake. So you're going to have different vistas. Along Option One, you're going to have essentially the same vista across Lake Hickory, depending on whatever direction you're looking, it's all level there for the most part. But it's going to be higher Option Two, portions of it, half of it's going to be higher than Option One. And finally, that Option Two has better views, and we say this is false. The views aren't better, they're just different. Again, Option One is all along the river, Option Two's half along the river, half up in the trees. So it's dependent upon the time of year, where you are, in any particular location, your views are going to be different, what you can and cannot see from the upland portions of Option Two. So that's kind of the, just trying to dispel some of the myths or inaccuracies or misunderstandings that we've heard about those options of Riverwalk One and Riverwalk Two. So we take, we took all this data back to the Bond Commission last week, and they, again, have worked with us through this process since last May, as I said, the 23 meetings they really understand these projects, are really passionate about the projects. And we took them through a process last week where they finally, they voted and made their recommendation that Frank and Mike are going to present to you now. And after they get done, if you have questions for any of us along, you know, we'll be happy to try to answer those. So without further ado, let me turn it over to Mike and to Frank, and they'll update you from here.
Thanks, Charles. I might let you run that because I don't want to mess it up. Go ahead and move it to the next slide. So folks, Frank and I are going to explain to you the final two options that were presented to the Bond Commission last week that we voted on, help make sure you understand what the two of them are, and then let you know what we decided. But before I get into that, I did want to say two things in general. The first is, I think I speak for everybody on the Bond Commission when I echo or parallel the sentiments Charles had, which is that from our chair, working with your staff and with the folks at Freeze Nichols, has been a real pleasure to work us through this process thus far in the first year of this project. So we appreciate their contribution in making it easy on our large group. And the second is to echo a comment that I think Mike had at the meeting last week, which is that, to a certain extent, this is a hard analysis for us because they're both excellent choices, and we have a good problem that we're having to solve in deciding between these two things, so that's good to know. If you can go ahead, Charles. The next thing, I wanted to make sure you all understood what combined Option A was, because that wasn't something that had been shown in detail before. But it came about because in looking at the three options that had received a significant amount of support leading up to this, there was a lot of similarity. All of them were premised around Option Two for the Riverwalk as the first choice, and as many of the amenities along the Citywalk as would fit within the budget, and there were just a few little differences. It may be easier for me to walk over here and talk loud to try to point them out than to stay over here. But you can see that above this line, all three of these choices, which were Option A, which was one of the choices that staff and Freeze Nichols presented, and which was approved of by one of the groups in the Bond Commission, and the options presented by Group One and Group Two are all exactly the same from here up. Option A and Group Two both had the Citywalk Union Square amenities. The main avenue, the first avenue, first third amenities are there, and the second avenue realignment. Group One dropped out the Union Square and instead added the 321 Clement Boulevard Gateway and the Citywalk amenities at the LR end of the Citywalk, which is additional plantings out there, sort of in that block that's now open by LR at the end of Citywalk. And there were some differences in the second choices. Group Two was essentially the same as Option A, but they had had Riverwalk Option One as one of the features to be added if funds became available in an appropriate timeline. So what combined Option A has is all of those features from here up that were common to Group, Option A and Group Two. The Clement Boulevard Gateway that Group One had proposed, and including leaving Riverwalk Option One as an upgrade if funds become available within an appropriate time. So that's combined Option A was one of the two options presented at our meeting last week, and then Frank's going to explain to you, remind you what the other, Group Four option was.
Yeah, you can switch. Thank you. We're going with two heads are better than one here. Okay, so Group Four, the most important thing to notice about Group Four here is that the number one thing, the most important thing for them, was Riverwalk Option One, period. So in order to get that, they had to forego some of the amenities on the Citywalk. They also had to forego the connectivity from, essentially from Old Lenora Road to the Riverwalk, so the area that goes by Arby's there, past the old Nissan dealership. So, you know, down the Riverwalk Option One, it was essentially, I guess, Citywalk Pedestrian Bridge, it was essentially the same. So they get the Citywalk spine, not the same amenities along that spine, however, in order to get Option One. They feel, Group Four, that Riverwalk Option One has to be done because it has to be done right, in their opinion, that's the only way to do it, the first time. They feel that somewhere down the road, down the line, that there will be trails coming off of Option One that will essentially look like Option Two. And in order to get there, they have found a way to, $4 million in order to spend Option One. So Mike, now, we're going back to him, and then we're going to go back to me, is going to compare the two side by side.
I think Frank did a pretty good job of showing you these differences, but the difference between combined Option A and Group Four essentially comes down to Riverwalk Option One versus Riverwalk Option Two at the outset, and then taking away some of these amenities that come along with Citywalk and the Gateway in order to pay for it, and then, as Frank said, taking away this north connection between Citywalk and Riverwalk, and that's essentially the streetscape between the Guyton Road, Clement Boulevard, Old Lenora Road intersection north to the Citywalk. So there'd still be the streetscape from the end of the Citywalk downtown, along Old Lenora Road to Guyton Road, which is the south connection. So that's the difference. Combined Option A has Riverwalk Option One as a possibility down the road if funding becomes available, and Group Four has Riverwalk Option One as a commitment out of the bonds.
Okay, next. So recommendation, first I want to talk a little bit about how we got here. You know, how did we arrive at this point? Charles spoke to most of it. I just want to reiterate the fact that when we started, our first meeting, we had to choose which subcommittee that we wanted to be a part of. And it went fairly well. We were split up pretty evenly within the three subcommittees. From that point, we went out and we concentrated on those subcommittees respectively. Then we came back together and we reported on our subcommittees, we went back out and tried to refine the subcommittees, and I'll tell you, the fact that we really felt good, look, we're new at this, we've never done this before, we really felt good about receiving grants. In fact, we felt good about the Tiger Grant. Unfortunately, we did not receive that. But I think it's important to note that it meant a lot to us, it was, it impacted our decisions greatly from that point on. But what happened to December 8th, to me, quite frankly, was a little bit shocking. So the subcommittees came together for the commission meeting on December 8th. That's when we had to make a decision about different options. But the overall theme, if you will, that you see here is that some of these subcommittees are not choosing some of their favorite things. So instead of that, we as a commission are trying to get a complete picture. So instead of that, we as a commission are trying to get a complete picture. We want the connectivity, we think it's crucial. So from LR, from 40, to the CityWalk, the CityWalk all the way to and through the Riverwalk to the Lackey Project. We feel that that is the most important thing. The word of the commission so far has been iconic, and every time we say it, we kind of chuckle a little bit. But in fact, Mr. Dixon said he looked up iconic, and he's not sure exactly what it means as it relates to this. But I think what it means to us is that we want people from around the state, from other states, to see this project and to recognize that, hey, that's Hickory, North Carolina, you know, let's go there. Or they're going down 321, let's stop there, let's spend some money, I want to move there. You know, that's the point of this. So back to the connectivity and why we chose this recommendation. I guess before the vote last week, when we had to choose between combined A and group number four, is that right? It's very confusing. Some questions were brought up. So I want you to notice, right at the bottom of this recommendation, it says additional projects, and in it, it says Riverwalk option one. So we are not saying we don't necessarily won't Riverwalk option one. We're saying if we have additional funding, we would like to have the right to consider option one. So we feel that there's a little bit more flexibility in the combined option A. We're not saying we're married to option two, we're not saying we're married to option one. We just have the flexibility now. We feel there will be funding. One thing that we didn't do, we have some people that just plain won't option two for the Riverwalk. They want to be able to walk up through there. And some people just plain won't option one. Those that want one are okay with this option. You know, it's in your hands now, I feel you'll make the right decision, but I think it's crucial that we understand that hopefully we'll get more funding and we'll have more flexibility in the future. I think that's pretty much it. But so this is our recommendation, combined option A. So we get the amenities of the Riverwalk, and at this point, we get option two. But it's crucial that we do, in fact, do this the right way and so that it's iconic. Anything else you'd like to state?
The only thing I was going to add is I do think that this recommendation, and 80% I think should speak to you pretty strongly, but I think that does represent the view of most folks on the bond commission, that connectivity is the highest priority, and then some flexibility to try to work toward Riverwalk option one after we've committed to that connectivity makes a lot of sense. So I think that's our part of it, but I don't know. Turn it back over to Charles. Questions, ready, any of us?
Yes, I have a question. Wouldn't it be rather difficult to, if you start option two on the Riverwalk, to then, in case somebody drops several million dollars on the city, to go back to option one if you've started construction on option two?
It's not necessarily difficult, it's just expensive.
More expensive.
Yes, sir. And that's a very good question, and it really becomes down to a matter of timing, that the city at some point, assuming you move forward with option two and get into the design and get into the permitting, how far down that path is the point of no return?
Right.
And so it really is a question of timing, when the funding might become available relative to the design of not so much the construction cost, we need to design it whichever way first.
Right.
Very good question.
To kind of piggyback on what Dave said, also, once you commit to option number two, there's really no turning around or coming back. The rest of it, CityWalk and all that, can be added to later, whereas option two for Riverwalk can't be necessarily changed once it's in place, whereas amenities could be added so forth and so on to the CityWalk, but not so much to the Riverwalk.
Yes, sir. There's a lot more flexibility with CityWalk, just because of, you can have the spine of CityWalk, and then the amenities that are off at different places gives you more flexibility than you have with the Riverwalk design and construction.
So my point is, if you spend more on Riverwalk in the beginning, then you've got that in place, whereas if you spend less on it and more on the CityWalk, you can't change them, they're not interchangeable, they're not, you can't fix it after it's done.
Well, option two, I didn't trace it exactly, but option two starts off at the water, then goes up, and it comes down to the water again.
Yes, sir.
I didn't see where it would be, other than expensive, that difficult to leave the higher elevation in there, but also extend the lower elevation, connect the lower elevation.
That's kind of what I'm saying, if you do option...
Which you can do for four or five million dollars.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, you can.
I'd like to remind Mr. Zadareoli that we have said all along, we expect that by the time this is over with, between the partnerships and donations, we're going to probably spend a hundred million dollars.
Sure.
But we're not going to plan to spend anything over 35.55.
Well, I would love to see this program advance as quickly as possible, and would hate to drag it along while we're waiting for another $4 million to complete option one versus option two. Also, if you think about, if you're coming down 321 or going up 321, the major part of that walk you see will be on the water. So if you're going 65 miles an hour or 60 miles an hour, you can't watch the whole Riverwalk that goes back up to the park. So the majority of the iconic part of that walk will be visible immediately as you go over the bridge.
And there will be other iconic features that they will see.
The bridge is going to be iconic, is it not?
When we start?
Okay.
We don't know what it means.
Charlie Dixon.
If Charlie doesn't know, nobody else knows.
If Charlie doesn't know, nobody knows.
One of my questions is, if the money were taken out of the picture, would option one have gotten the most votes? I think so, because just thinking about all of the comments about, oh, we got to keep option one because everybody loved it so much, it was a possibility to come in later. Will we have a chance later to do that?
We were asked that question last week by the bond commission. Why didn't we ask that question in our survey in December? And kind of my response was, well, we can't take money out of the equation, and we're at the point now, it's, you've got to make some decisions, and it's all about the dollars, and how you allocate those dollars.
Well, if money were not in the equation, there's a whole lot of other stuff that matters.
Well, I mean, just that amount, right there, that $4 million.
Well, Charles, I'll jump in on that. I think that there's a, I don't know the numbers, but I think there's a subset of the commission that would choose option two, even if they had all the money in the world, and there's a group of people that want option one no matter what, and I think there's another group of people who think money matters, and so that was part of their analysis. Now, how big those three groups are, I don't know.
Yeah, and also, excuse me if I may. We actually did a Riverwalk survey, but we didn't take money out of it. But just in case you want to know the results, it was 59% for option two to 41% for one. We did not take money out of it, so I'm not sure if that helps.
It does, thank you.
Also, when you're talking about ADA requirements, I realize they do have minimum standards.
That's right.
And we went out of our way, I think, to do the Zara Baker playground, to where any child that wanted to get on there could do that and participate in what's going on.
Well, but even there, not every single thing, but they can play with their friends, yeah.
So I just wondered, as far as diversity goes among those folks that are not able to do the whole Riverwalk down there, there will be some, I'm sure. I just want to make it as possible, as available as possible to all citizens. So I don't know, how many would we leave out doing the whole thing if we did? And I realize, I like the trails up to there, and those are some things, I think, once you have the spine in place, they can be added later. But I think that would be easier to add later than to come in and redo the Riverwalk later. So, I don't know, I've done a lot of thinking about it, I'm not sure I know exactly what I want either. I am so glad we have all this bond commission here. Without you guys, I don't know where we'd be with it. We might have been fistfired up here, I don't know. Of course, that might be more exciting to watch at a city council meeting than all this talk, but I think it's important that we consider the diversity of all the citizens on this, regardless of what may cause them not to be able to do that, to lower that as far as we can.
Yeah, I really appreciated Mike Thomas's comment, I can't seem behind that. That sort of there, you know, in any decision-making process, you've got to be influenced by sort of a value, if you will, and the influencing value that seemed to be predominant in the bond commission was this idea of connectivity. And, you know, I think that, I think as council, that's something that we, if we want to talk about one or two, we're going to have to solve that one first. Is connectivity, is that the overriding thing? Because we can get down into the details of, you know, do this now, do this later, but it's kind of, you know, I think Charles and his group did a great job at our last meeting where they sort of gave us a bunch of different options based on, one was based on connectivity, another one was based on dispersion of the bond funds across the city equally, you know, sort of, and, you know, that's not necessarily wrong. But at the end of the day, for me, it's bang for the buck. It's bang for the buck, and, you know, so if we can, if we can be satisfied that we are getting, and not only just satisfied, I think we've absolutely got to be sure, on behalf of the taxpayers, that we're making wise, prudent decisions with regards to spending the money, and I know we will, that, you know, we, the more we can get, the better.
Right.
So, and look, I mean, we can always, you know, even on, there's tons of CityWalk amenities that weren't included in the combined option A. There's gobs of streetscapes that we're missing, Springs Row, for example, combined option A. So I think we've got to be sensitive to the fact that we've got to make the most with what we have, in my humble opinion, so.
That's what we, you know, that's our whole mission as a council, anyway.
I agree, I agree.
Well, when we started talking about this, my recollection is, the first number we talked about in the bond referendum was $25 million, and I think the very thought of that sucked the breath out of everybody in the room.
That's correct.
And we said, no, 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 we can't do that, let's do 40, because we could see that we needed to spend enough to make an impact, and 25 was just not going to. Can you imagine how much harder the commission's work would have been spreading 25 million compared to 40 million?
Another thing, I was wondering, we know, we know how high the bridge is going to be. We know that.
The vehicular bridge?
The 321.
Yeah, the 321 bridge. Do we know how high that's going to be?
About.
About.
Yeah, about.
It would be nice to see what that looked like over there from that height, you know, fly a drone.
Are you thinking drone?
Or what it would take, but it's hard to vision something that you can't get to point and see from.
Well, if you're going to fly drones from over there, you're going to magnify the heck out of these things.
So I just, it would be nice to see that, and we're talking about the iconic effect.
I think we had a commission member wanting to speak, since this is a workshop, why not, huh?
Yes.
I didn't want to break protocol, so.
Well, I don't think there's any protocol necessary for this meeting, so.
Well, if I may, I just wanted to correct a misconception about the option four, our group four presentation, and that is the fact that it lacked connectivity. That's actually not the case at all. It was a trade-off, and you know, my mom always said, honey, life is a trade-off. So this was a trade-off that we made. This streetscape that we eliminated, we chose to eliminate between this Lenore Line Boulevard, Clement Boulevard piece, and 321, because that's where 12th Avenue Drive peels off, there in the church. Do you guys know the triangle? And from there, there are already sidewalks, there's already connectivity to the Hickory City Park where the tennis courts are, the sidewalk goes all the way down to Gartner Park, so the connectivity is there, and it's already been paid for. So that was a trade-off that we decided to make. Okay, thank you.
Well, connectivity is something I think all council members get hit with a lot, you know, why are the streets the way they are, you know? You're running along 4th Street northeast, and it just ends. But a couple blocks later, it'll start back up again, you know? Connectivity is probably, I've heard more about being on the council than anything else in Hickory. And I don't know if it's the name of the street that makes the difference, or the connectivity that makes the difference with the same names, but anyway.
I was just going to suggest, I know it's on that chart, but Charles, could you go ahead and just articulate the actual numbers for the Riverwalk, CityWalk, Streetscapes, and Gateways for option A? We don't actually have that anywhere on our slides, so everybody knows that, you know, what those total amounts are. Well, just, yeah, each of the categories. So for the CityWalk, it's X, that's listed there.
We'll start with here with Riverwalk. This is option two, eight and a half million dollars. For the four Streetscapes, it's 11.2 million dollars. For three Gateways, it's $750,000. And for the CityWalk, it's 11.2 million dollars, and that gets you, that's just the segments from 4th Street to Lenore Line University. Does not include the bridge across 127, that's the additional amenities of 3.9. So CityWalk becomes a $15 million project essentially. That includes pedestrian bridge over 127, the Union Square improvements, which are is the parking depot station, and some landscaping there. Main Avenue improves from 1st to 3rd, sidewalk on the south side of the other tracks, and some landscaping there. And then the Second Avenue, northeast realignment, which is the traffic circle and the intersection down the street.
Is that helpful to you all? I just knew we had not covered the actual numbers for each of the categories.
And that total is, is that 35?
35.5.
35.5. 35 and a half million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Plus or minus?
Plus or minus.
That leaves four and a half million.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, is that the buffer?
Well, what the instruction had been to the bond commission was to set aside, excuse me, $5 million for 1764, the business part.
Okay.
So their challenge was to work within that $35 million.
That was their cap, 35 million, so. We took $5 million for it.
Correct.
Okay.
I thought you'd added that into your figure.
No, I did not add that in. I would like to, but no, it disappeared all of a sudden.
Well, I'll take my challenge back on your man.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dixon, I think, has something to say.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make one or two comments. I'm sure you thought I was coming up here to explain what iconic means, but I'm not sure. But rather than going through the various stages, I would like to remind the council that we had an 80% favorable vote for the first option from the full bond commission, and I think their recommendation, after many, many hearings and meetings and discussions and arguments, that that should bear a great weight with the city council.
I think that does, Mr. Dixon, and that's one reason I asked my question earlier, if that one part had been taken out of the vote, would it have been any different?
When are we going to vote? When are we going to vote?
Well, that's up to you all, and you can...
And you can vote tonight. We had on the schedule this presentation, and then we also had one more meeting with you all, which is your next city council meeting, the first meeting in February. Basically, our plans have that decision being made in this two-week period of time, so that now we can move to the next phase, which is starting to interview designers and go forward.
I'd like to have a public hearing. I know it's not required.
What would we have the public hearing on? I would encourage us to choose one to have the public hearing on and get comments.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
If they put two.
No, 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 we don't, we don't want people arguing individual amenities.
Right, right, right.
I think you're right. We select, we select one, and then seek political, public input before it's set in store.
Yeah, so we talked about, you know, adding things on, and as, you know, you've got the spine in place, you can add on to it. It'd be easier to have all the spines in place and add on to those than it would be to come back later and put in a new piece of spine. Not saying it couldn't be done, but I think, talking about money, that would cost more in the long run. I'm not sure, though. I'm not the.
There's only exception to that big Riverwalk. That's the only exception to that. I think somebody else should speak.
There was another person in the commission.
Did you want to speak, please, sir?
The only thing I was going to say was, and I don't think anybody's mentioned this tonight, was that all these numbers have 30% contingency, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So they're made, the money may already be there, because if you think about that, 30% of 35 and a half is 10 and a half million dollars. That these are estimated overages, it really is like 25 to make it 35 and a half. So the money for differently, one and two, may be there, or a number of these other options that did not get included.
There are two ways you can look at that contingency. One is, well, it's there so we can spend it if we need to on that project.
Yes, sir.
Or the second way is, if we save every penny of the contingency, we can add four, five, six, seven more projects.
Yes, sir.
I can tell you that my vote consistently is going to be to work to get more projects.
You can just about do a great deal of them with an extra 10 and a half million dollars.
Contingency's not there to be spent, although the contractors sometimes think it is. I have never been a contractor, but I've been a contractor auditor.
So what about this as a suggestion to move forward? What about, this is not the form of a motion yet, just for discussion, that we accept the bond commission's recommendation, which is combined option A here tonight, and we call for a public hearing on that particular recommendation. And then we.
We could do that here, can't we? Do we need to wait until the next meeting?
I think we do, I think we do that here.
Actually, if you did it here, then that would expedite it, because then we could advertise for the public hearing at your February meeting and, you know, do the presentation, hear from the public, and then if y'all were prepared to take action, then.
Or you convert your non-motion to a motion.
Okay. Yeah, I move that we accept the bond commission's recommendation, with appreciation, by the way, for a job well done, of what I understand to be combined option A, and call for a public hearing to get some public comment and discussion before moving forward at our February meeting. I'll second that.
Motion by Lael, second by Zagoroli. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Carlton and Ms. Patton are not present.
I just want to thank everyone on my behalf, and the city's behalf too, I guess I could do that for all your hard work.
Well, I want to thank Charles and the other good folks from Freeze Nichols. And let's have a hand for them and our iconic bond commission. By the way, the bond commission knows, your work's not over.
That's right. That's right, yeah.
I was just thanking them up to this point, so they would want to continue. No, thank you, somebody.
Mr. Berry.
I know it's a lot of passion and sweat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on your agenda is to basically hear from a gentleman named David Carter, who's been here in your meeting before, and to both give a broad update on the progress that's been made, and want to recognize the Lackey family that's here with us this evening. Appreciate them. So David Carter is working both on behalf of the Lackey family and on the city to kind of help facilitate the governance structure and other related issues on the project. And so he's going to make a presentation to kind of bring you up to speed on where we are, and then more specifically, talk about the conservancy as a body. And as we have already discussed with you all, that conservancy will be, will have appointees from both the city council and the Lackey family, so we needed to get you up to speed on the types of people to be thinking about. And I don't want to steal too much of your thunder, David, but, because we're at the point now where that entity needs to be organized, so that they can start entering into agreements with the city. And so that means you all will be needing to make appointments, as well as Mr. Lackey, so it can all be formalized and ready to move forward. So Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Good to be with you again. As Mr. Berry said, I visited with you briefly back in June, and we've made a lot of progress since that time. And I was asked to come back and visit with you again as you go through the next phase of this process. And I was asked to briefly introduce myself to you, kind of my background, and how I was asked to participate in this project with the city and a little bit with the Lackey family now. I spent 30 years with Wake County Parks Recreation and Open Space in Raleigh, retired from them, and went to work for a national land conservation group, where I was the director of conservation finance. I found your previous hour very interesting, because that's what I did for a number of years. I traveled around the United States, working with communities just like your own, putting together ballot measures, putting together the message, selling them, and working with bond council, and then working in public-private partnerships. And indeed, you're right, sir, they did an outstanding job. And so kudos to all of that. I spent a lot of time in Wake County, working in public-private partnerships and developing that. And so with a strong background in finance as well, I was asked to participate and to work with the city and provide some counsel and some guidance. And so we find ourselves right now at a very interesting point, because it's a critical step in moving forward with this public-private partnership, and that is looking at the conservancy. As you know, this is going to be a unique place in one of your city parks, and the conservancy is going to be a seven-member board, made up of three members that will be appointed by you, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight, as well as four members appointed by the Lackey family. And so they have a dual role, and that's one of the most important things I want you all to remember tonight, is that they are both fund development and then a management oversight, as per the contractual agreement that the city is crafting with the Lackey family. Those two elements are quite challenging, both with fund development and then the management side. And so keep that in mind as I talk about the ideal candidate, if you will. The timeframe when all of this is going to go on, I will leave that up to city staff, but I know negotiations are still going on. There's been some, a lot of work done by the architectural firm in Atlanta, and I know things are getting much closer on that. A lot of very good architectural design work has been done so far. Now, the comments that I'm going to make tonight are my recommendations only. These are my recommendations based upon my experience that I'm making to city council, staff, and to the Lackey family, who I know is in the audience with us tonight. But I believe you're at the tipping point right now of the design process, as well as the negotiations, where some of the recommendations that I'm making tonight, I think, need to go forward in a timely fashion, because there's a lot of work that needs to get done because of the uniqueness of this relationship. And I think that timing is of the essence. One of the things I noticed that, I know from my background, is that if you wait much longer, it delays the process that much further out. Whereas you start doing some of the work upfront now, then when the design phase starts kicking in, or other the construction drawings and so on, a lot of this work is done, or it's being done, and then simultaneously, you can work in a linear fashion, and this work is being done coupled together. And so some of the first steps of the board, if you will, the conservancy board, is getting together and vetting. I'm recommending that the bylaws, policies, and procedures be presented to them in a draft format, so that when they meet on the first evening, one of the first things they will do is to vet that information, have an opportunity to really look at it, and start deciding exactly how they want to, as a board, govern themselves, because that's very, very important. One of the things that trips up a lot of boards of this type is making sure that you have the right skill set. And I put down there, that one of the first steps is equipping and developing this skill set. This is critical. Their leadership skills that they need to develop and need to hone in on are going to be a critical element for success, not only for the Lackey family and their fund development, but for the overall management of the park as well. The relationship with the city, I can't say that enough. This is crucial. It's a public-private partnership. The folks in the city won't know the difference. Most of the folks that are in your city won't understand that there is a private nonprofit organization that will be managing an envelope within the greater park. They may understand that it might not quite be the same, but for the most part, they're not going to get it. And so the folks that are involved with this are really an ambassador. They're part of the city, and they represent the city. And so that relationship that the city is going to be developing is extremely, extremely important. The relationship is the key word. It's very, very valuable. And everyone must be intentional in their actions, and I don't want to spend a lot of time really discussing that right now, just saying that, indeed, when you look at these types of relationships, everything has to be well thought out, just as your bond commission did. And it's obvious, having sat here and listened to it, and been through a lot of bond discussions, there was a lot of really good work done, because I've sat through some that it was just fistfights, trying to get work through it. And so it's obvious that the people in this community are valued that, and are very intentional about their work, and so kudos to that. I want to spend just a few minutes talking about the ideal candidate, and some of the characteristics that I have found works best when you start appointing people to a board of this nature. First and foremost, let me tell you, there is no such thing as an ideal candidate. What I'm about to tell you, super person, Superman, Superwoman, I guess a Superwoman on Monday night now, does not exist. Now, what you're hoping for, though, is I've developed a very long, long list of skill sets and attributes that I have shared with both Mr. Lackey and with your city staff, what I believe are crucial skills. Your goal is to look at taking all seven people, pulling them together, and then having a super candidate. And so keep that in mind for the next few minutes. There is no ideal candidate. Now, I hate the analogy of thinking outside the box, so I refuse to use that anymore. I refuse, I like to use must draw outside the lines. And the reason I like to say that is because, you know, I've got a four-year-old granddaughter, and she loves to do creative dancing. She can't dance, but she loves to do it. And so I encourage her to do so, and her mother stops her when she starts singing inappropriately. But she's very creative. And the people that you appoint to this, now I know you appoint a lot of people to a lot of different boards and commissions, et cetera, but these people have got to be different. They've got to be creative, imaginary, and just think differently than the average person that you might appoint to somebody. They've got to be willing to color outside the lines. First and foremost, they need to understand fund development at a large-scale level. When I was learning about fund development, I was learning it from a very well-connected lady from Raleigh, and she said to me, and I won't imitate her southern drawl, but she said to me, David, the first thing you need to do in fund development is friend raising. It's not fundraising, it's friend raising. It's the first thing you've got to do. And so understanding that, a lot of the upfront work that needs to be done is just bringing people together and letting them see the vision that's being created by the Lackey family with the city, with the architectural firm in Atlanta, so people start understanding how all of this meshes together with the recommendations that we all heard just a few minutes ago. And that's kind of, to me, as I listen to the boardwalk, and as I saw the map where it ends, it ends with the Lackey family property project that we're talking about tonight, at least the last way I saw it on the map. And so understanding that there is a larger picture to this whole conservancy board, team player. Too often, I've seen, working with boards of this nature, where you have too many Lone Rangers, and they want to come in with their own agenda. It won't work. It won't work. It's got to be a team effort. Everybody's got to get behind the vision that is being created by the Lackey family with the guidance of your city staff. And so when it's all said and done, people are focused in on a single vision, just as you have done with the bond council tonight. You have now a vision that you can focus on. Well, as they go through and finalize things, eventually, there'll be a common vision, and so it's important that those folks have exactly that. I can't emphasize it enough, these folks have to have exemplary, exceptional leadership skills. If there's one thing I've learned in 35-plus years in local government, is that those leadership skills are absolutely crucial. They've got to be willing to work. Now, I purposely put that in there, because I've seen too many people wanting to get appointed to a board of this nature, and pardon me for being blunt, as a resume builder. They have no intention on doing much work, but it looks good on my resume. And so they'll come to a meeting occasionally and not do a whole lot. This is the type of board that you've got to be prepared to roll up your sleeves and get dirty, and get to work, in order for this thing to be successful. So look for hard workers. Look for those people who are type A personalities, that already have too much, too many things on their plate now, because they always have the time to find one more thing to do. The members of this conservancy must look like the community. A diverse crew, just as your community is diverse. So it's important that you keep that in mind as well. Must have excellent communication skills. Most importantly, be a good listener. Be a good listener. What's important? You know, when you look at how this project is unfolding, and then how it will be managed, what's best for the overall community? One of the gentlemen was talking about what this is, this whole bond council and all the projects is going to do for the city of Hickory. And it is. This is a part of that. They must be committed to the vision of what the conservancy is all about. The top one on that one, this is one that I've always found interesting, as I've sat in these groups, is that there'll be a difficult topic, and no one wants to talk about it. It's the 800-pound gorilla that sits over in the corner, and we pretend that it doesn't exist. These people that are appointed have got to be willing to talk about the undiscussable items that will come up. They're not going to come up that often, but too often, they get pushed to the side, pushed to the side, pushed to the side. And eventually, I've seen boards just evolve into, or devolve, I should say, into a very contentious issue, a very, very open disagreements with one another, where they shouldn't be. And so be willing to have open and honest conversations with one another. Sometimes it's best to have a facilitator come in to help with those. If you have a good chair person, they can help with that an awful lot. They've got to be a good champion for the park and for the city at all times. So not only for that, for this particular envelope in the park, but also just being a champion for all the city parks. Very, very important. I don't know if my good, if Mac saw the same email I got this morning, with very good information we've got coming out right now in our profession, as far as looking at the economic impact of parks and recreation in the community, and how important it is, and the value that people place on it. I mentioned it a little while ago, everybody's got to be an ambassador of good standing. And I know that you are backed up for time, so I'm going to leave it there. The manager has. The, the manager has a complete list. I've only given you about maybe one-sixth of the, I've given you the highlights only of the ideal candidate, but the manager has the complete list. The Lackey family has the complete list as well of all of those folks. So those are just some quick recommendations for you to consider as you think about those candidates that might be best to serve on this board and working with the, the four that Mr. Lackey and his family will be appointing as well. Any questions at all that I might answer for you?
Have you worked with any municipalities where the, or groups where the appointees have come from folks that are closer to the project? We're, 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 we are representatives of the city and the citizens.
Yep.
But we, we stand at a little bit of distance to the project.
Yep.
And, and that's with, with reason, because we have to clearly be, um, be on the city side of the table.
You bet.
But there's other people within our staff that are a lot closer.
Yep.
And that can have a better understanding of what's going on. And they might be in a better position to make recommendations to council.
Yep, for approval.
Is, is that done?
You mean as far as having staff make recommendations?
Yes, I guess that's the direct way of doing it.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes. I would look to your staff.
Yeah.
I would look to your staff, because your staff, you do have a great staff and they know a lot of folks, so I would, I obviously look to them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. So, so that is.
Yes, oh, yes. Because ultimately, you're going to make the recommendation. You're going to make the final determination.
We'll make the final, yeah, approval, but I, I guess with regards to, because I think you're spot on with, you know, this board's got a sort of jail and, and you got, we got to be intentional about it.
Yep.
It's difficult in this environment to, to know what Lackey's doing with regard to appointees.
Yep.
And, you know, if I have an appointee I would like to bring forward, you know, what's the skill set versus an appointee that Danny might want to bring forward? I mean, yeah.
I think you hit, I think you hit a good point. I would challenge your staff to bring a list of folks that they may know to Mr. Berry and say, here's the folks that the city council may want to consider. Get their resumes. Get, you know, start looking at them, compare them to what the Lackey families are looking at. I don't know who they've, if they've chosen any yet or who they've chosen. There may be one or two overlap in there. And then start sitting down with each other and start saying, you know, these are some folks that we're, we're considering. You know, personally, I would recommend that, that the staff work with the Lackey family when it gets down to the final seven, so they're vetting each other, because this, the, the seven people that are appointed, they got to, they got to play in the sandbox together well. And, and, you know, I, I'm recommending some diverse personalities, but not people who are committed to their own agenda and not willing to work. And I'm trying to say that as delicately as I can.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You mentioned that time was important. Is there a timeframe in your mind?
Personally, I think there's a lot of work that needs to get done. I would start setting up that board, I would start looking at it in the next 60 to 90 days. Because there's a lot of work that they need to do. There's a lot of background, there's a lot of, you know, when you start looking at the, the fund development plan, how that's going to go about, start looking at what the requirements are, where we are with the design work, how, where that whole concept is. There's a lot of background work that needs to be done on a pro forma data set, looking at the design, the features, and then the revenue generation possibility. And then start looking at the operations and maintenance costs versus the revenue generating opportunities, because there's going to be a gap in there, and then where, how is that gap filled? And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's a lot of, all the training, there's just a lot of gelling, of meshing of this board, just getting together and just talking with one another.
Are you eligible to be appointed?
Pardon me, sir?
Are you eligible to be appointed?
No, sir. I don't live inside the city of Hickory, but thank you though.
Now, you couldn't move here within the next.
Well, I could.
60, 90 days, okay.
But I'm glad to help you out any way I can on this. This is an exciting project. It truly is.
I think in terms of that schedule, my own personal kind of schedule was to, in the next 60 days, you know, gone through the process David's talking about, we're all kind of on the same page, get y'all's input, our input, and, you know, y'all be ready to appoint your members in that February, March timeframe, because there is a lot of work that, and we're to the point now where so much work has been done for, for the entity to be set up, all those things. I mean, it is now time to have a board in place so that we can go to the next step. It's, it's, we're getting into short rows.
Yeah. I know you've got dinner waiting and another meeting to go to, so if there's no other questions, thank you for your time and attention, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to do?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved, seconded.
Motion by Zagoroli, seconded by Lael and others. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. As usual, that's unanimous. Thank you all for being here.